Meeting to order. This is Monday, October the 26th. This is a regular meeting of the Kaufman County Commissioners' Court. Our usual meeting room is downstairs, is being used for early voting, so we are somewhat packed in here today. But we'll make it through. We're getting some additional chairs, I believe, being brought in. If you are here and you wish to address the court on any issue that's listed on the agenda, feel free to do that. You'll need to sign in. Or if it's not on the agenda, we would ask that you sign in as well. And you will have three minutes at the beginning of the meeting to speak to any item that is not on the agenda. And then if you want to talk about an item on the agenda, you can certainly do that at a appropriate time. So, in that regard, we will have the indication. I'm sorry, we did not have flags in this room at this point. I've just made myself a note to make sure that we get those ordered. And we'll make sure the next time we meet that we'll have flags here. So just use your imagination, I guess, is the best way to say it. He has a Texas flag on, whether you see it or not. I think he has a flag on his pail there. Anyway, if you would join me now and stand. [Clerk] Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the opportunity we have together in this room to discuss the county's business. Lord, we thank you for just allowing us to live in the greatest country in the world. Lord, with all of our hiccups and our blemishes and all things that sometimes we don't like to happen, we know that you bless this country more than any other country and will continue to do that. Lord, just pray now for those that are dealing with flooding issues in various parts of our state. We would be remiss if we did not thank you today for the rain that you sent. Lord, we needed that very much and we appreciate the fact that you heard the many prayers that have been sent requesting that. Lord, keep us safe as we go about our day's business. We pray now that we will have a productive Commissioners' Court meeting and all these things. We ask of thy son's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor on the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the meaning of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, amen. And my marshal will be, I guess, maybe Fort Bayless today, and so we have three people that have signed up. The first one is Julie Josie. And Ms. Josie did not give an address. I've been talking to the court before. No, I have to be discussed, so would you...
I'm sorry. I, this is such a... But I'm going to defer my time.
Okay, so who?
Am I allowed to defer it to a Commissioner that he needs it?
Well, yes.
Okay, then I would like to defer my time to Commissioner Rosalik should he need it.
Okay. All right, then John Cook is here.
Same with me.
Okay, thanks. And then Larry Rosalik.
Same.
Okay. And that's all the people that I have that have been, that are signing up here. One of the things we're going to be doing today, as you may have noted, is discussing the court rules that we use as far as getting it before. And we'll try to provide more information about that. That'd be one of the discussion items that we'll have here today. The next item on the agenda is the routine correspondence. The only item I have on that is a report on the city sales tax. I passed the Commissioners' out and a copy of this. If you don't mind, I pass it around. It doesn't affect the county other than it does give, I think, a pretty good idea of the financial health of the county as far as retail sales are concerned. We have a copy of that and made a few extra copies if anybody would like to. We have one. The next item is item number two, and that is the consent agenda. And that item A is acceptance of meeting minutes for October the 12th, 2015. Discuss and consider approving petitions of Jerry Jacks, Ashley Richardson, Landon Walker, Justin Cukendall, and Waylon B. Chappell in for Kaufman County Sheriff's Department. Item C is to discuss and consider approving the request from the MACB Special Utility District to install a board for a water line under County Road 347 in Kaufman County Precinct Number Three. Also, B is to discuss and consider accepting project agreement with the City of Post-OPN for road repairs on County Road 280 and 281 in Kaufman County Precinct Number One. And then also, item E is to discuss and consider updates regarding Trinity Materials Donation and the County Road 346 Construction Project. Gentlemen, you have details about all of those items. Does anybody have any questions about any of those?
I make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Shane, make the... Mr. Shane makes the motion to accept. But Commissioner Phillips seconds the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. All right, thank you very much. The next item is to present the Kaufman County Auditor with an award that is given by the Controller's Office. And Karen, if you will step up, let me give this to you. This is, I believe, the third year or fourth year we've received this from the county. Third year. And this is given from the Glenn Hager, who is the Controller of Public Accountants, or Office, not Public Accountants, but Controller's Office in Austin. And they give it to counties, and they may give it to other governmental agencies too, but I'd like to read this to you. And this is from, it says, "Texas Controller and Leadership Circle Platinum Member awarded to Kaufman County. For continued progress towards achieving financial transparency, the Texas Controller's Leadership Circle program recognizes local governments across Texas that are striving to meet a high standard for financial transparency online. Your efforts to provide citizens with clear, consistent pictures of spending and share information in a user-friendly format have paved the way for achieving greater financial transparency." And basically what that is, is that all of our financial information is posted on our website. And if you have time and you go through the website, and you can see just about everything, I think, to deal with county governance for its financial concerns. This is our third year, and I would like to congratulate Karen and Herb South for the work that they put in to receive this award. And I didn't have enough money to buy something for you to hang it with, but maybe you can find enough money to spring for a... Thank you very much. The next item would be item number four, and that's to hear from our Fire Marshal considering the fire ban and whenever we put this on the agenda.
What kind of trigger did that?
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners, Just... Yeah, as you say, two weeks ago when I put this on the agenda, our drought index was near total drought. We were at 747. And in three days' time, we've had a 688 point reduction in our, with all the rate that we receive. So as of today's date, our average drought index for the county is 59. And three days ago, it was 747. I've never seen that large a drought. So based on that, I don't think we need to consider expanding the burn ban. Rather than allowing it to drop on November the 8th as it would be expiring, I recommend that we go ahead and drop the burn ban as of today's date.
Okay, you have a recommendation from the Fire Marshal. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Rosalik makes that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Allen seconds the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So next would be item number five. This is Radcliffe to present the Tax Assessor Collector's Monthly Report for September 2015.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
This completes our fiscal year of collections. We collected 26.9 million in MNO for the General Fund and 3.1 million for INS, getting us up to a 98.23% collection rate for the year. Our total collections for MNO and INS for the last fiscal year is $30,303,821. In the Road and Bridge, we collected 4.4 million in Road and Bridge and bring us to 98.24%. For some reason, Road and Bridge usually hangs just a little, tiny bit higher than the General Fund in collections. Our total collections for Road and Bridge for the year are 4.4 million. This month was 8,000. So we had no rollbacks this last month. We did have over 129,000 between the Road and Bridge and General Fund and going with taxes that we collected. Do you have any questions about the taxes?
We voted for what matters, seven, nine, eight. Yeah. We're down there. I can't vote back. Four, ten, straight. Any other questions of the Tax Assessor Collector? No, I'll have a motion to accept her review at the meeting. I have a motion, Commissioner Allen, to have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Phillips seconds the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Next item is, before you move, before you move off of this, could you like to make an announcement about the auction that we had, this Wednesday night?
Thank you.
I hope it's of great interest to people that are here.
Right. We have delinquent property sales and auctions, and we're having another auction October 28th at Taro City Hall at 6:30. We do that in the evening so people can come after work. Those, they can't get to the sheriff's sales during the week, so we have evening auctions, and this will be a resale. So it's going to be 25% of the property tech, of the property value or less this resale. So if you're interested in picking up any property, there's time to do it.
And these are properties that if don't the sheriffs say?
Yes.
Put nobody purchase them.
Right.
And approximately how many of them are there?
It varies every time depending on the area that we're selling in. We have about 30 properties this time around.
So somebody could really pick up some...
Good, pick up some really good deals, because sometimes we have re, re, resales. They've been a couple of times, and usually we don't take them to auction unless they're past their redemption period. That helps the mom and pops that want to buy and don't understand about redemption periods.
Plus, the good thing is it puts the property back on the tax roll.
That's the best thing.
And it might not be on there for much, but it's on there for something. And it does help. Some of those properties need to be cleaned up, too, so it's a win-win for everybody. Anyway, item number six is also from Mrs. Radcliffe to propose or to discuss and consider signing the annual hard election contract.
This is my first year doing, signing the contracts, because it has always been in IT before, and we changed it this year to put the budget for this hardware software support into my budget. And I just wasn't sure how you wanted me to handle this, so I wanted to get your permission for Judge Wood to sign the contract. It's a standard contract. It's the amount we knew and budgeted for our software support. It's for hard, for our elections equipment. So since it was actually a contract for the money, I just wasn't sure if I was supposed to come and ask you or not if the judge can sign this. So that's what I'm here for, to get this annual contract signed for our software support for our elections equipment.
And this is the group we've been using for the past several years?
Yes.
No changes?
Nothing, nothing changed. We have a standard agreement with them. And this is the, I think we're in our second year of a three-year agreement.
Okay. Since you're on our agreement that they can go up to 4%, are they going to pull up 4% on us, or do you know?
No.
Or is it just being the $37,000?
This amount is what they, their actual bill came in, it was for this exact amount, so we're good.
Is that, that's not 4% more of it?
No.
Okay. Any further questions, anybody?
Does this software capture an image of the electronic voting?
It does not. That would be a new system called Verity that Hard has. The only problem with going to Verity is that you can't just buy like one for each voting place or something. You'd have to replace all of your equipment with that type of equipment.
Isn't it a state law that electronic image is captured or...
Well, it's captured in... No, we capture it in terms of, like if we had a recount, we have the disk. It's captured in that way. We have the disk that we can go in and print out paper copies of what all the votes were. Yes. And that way it's captured. It's not captured, I'm misunderstanding your question. It's not captured in the way that each person can walk out with a copy of what they voted for. That would be a different system. It is captured in terms of, yes, we have the electronic piece of gear that will spit out an electronic paper copy if we needed.
And that's what, did you use in the recount?
Yes. Sorry for misunderstanding your question.
My other question would be, Rebecca, do we need to reword this aloud? Can the judge sign this contract?
I don't... I think, yeah, I think the county judge can sign it as it is right now. It's just a renewal.
Okay, we have motions from Commissioner Shane that we approve this contract with the county judge signing. If you approve, do I have a second? Commissioner Phillips seconds the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thank you very much, honey. Next item is item number seven from Mr. Oldfield, our Treasurer, to present and accept the Treasurer's Monthly Report for September 2015. I believe you have that, and I gave you some additional copies this morning for your individual precincts.
Good morning, gentlemen. The top item on your bundle should be the monthly report of County Treasurer. We began the month with the General Fund cash balance of $4.181,748.04, receipts of $1,598,1435, dispersments of $2,773,251.65, and ending balance of $2,568,310.74. The, all of the cash is at American National Bank except for a few dollars that's holding text flow accounts open that aren't bearing interest. You can see the road bond INS and Fund 64 has $20,843.57. That's collected for payment of the jail road, jail bonds. And in our Fund 128, the unused road bond fund of $19,547,845. Interest earned was, on the General Fund, was $3,090.13. On the road bond fund, it was $58,130.45, all of the funds, 970.5. And that interest is 35 basis points. And as you know, we worked diligently, I want to thank the judge and our consultant, John Polster, as we worked to determine whether any potential for investment of the $19 million in road bond funds would be possible. You know, even if we could do six and nine and 12 months CDs, we could exceed the 35 basis point interest. But Mr. Polster's emphatic conclusion was he needed to have the $19,547,845, all in immediately available essentially liquid cash. So I defer to his counsel on that. If the Commissioners can visit with him further. If we could at least identify some monies that might not be used for nine months or some monies that might not be used for 12 months, the interest income of the county would be substantial. The second page of your report is the County Quarterly Report, County Treasurer, July 1st, 2015 through September 30th, 2015. Beginning balance was, on July 1st, was $9,092,842.28. We had receipts of $3,279,748.70, and dispersments of $9,804,322.24, or an ending balance of You know, and that is a reconciled balance in the General Fund account. I believe there is a dating error of above the $2,568,310.74. That should, obviously should be 9/30/2015. We will, I will go downstairs and get that title cleaned up for our signature copy. And we did substantial analysis again at the behest of Judge Wood that we analyzed and see where we are on cash balance to see if the positioning of the NMO fund. So we began a cash flow analysis, and with the pooled cash stock, you know, we believe that collectively we'll make it to our tax collection season without having to borrow additional funds, but we are monitoring that. And again, we've developed a model, and y'all have seen it, I believe, and we'll try to start utilizing that model at least on a monthly basis. And as we go through 20, fiscal year 2016, if we continue using that model, we will continue to improve it each month, continue to improve the quality of the information that's being, gets presented, and so that when we get to this time next year, August, September, October, I believe we'll have no regard. Are there any questions?
I have any questions, Mr. Oldfield? I have one comment I prepared is on the last page. I know you were working on this, and I'm not sure exactly where you and his quarter are, but on the last page, it talks about that levy improvement district number one cash showing $64,459. I know that's been hanging in there for many years, and have you kind of come to how we're going to fix that? Because it's no longer viable, I don't think.
Thank you. Great question, Judge. And two, two answers. One, we, we are corresponding with each of the levy districts for which we are holding cash. We have active dialogue with two, and we have two that were having very difficult times in making valid contacts with people because of property ownership changes. In meeting with other officials in the county, seeking wisdom, that wisdom that was relayed to me is that it's up to the levy districts and the managers and the boards of those levy districts to manage their own affairs, that it would not be appropriate for me to go downstream and get actively engaged in those levy districts. Advice in our seat. Which is different than my general inclination of trying to fix everything that I can see that needs to be fixed. It's very difficult for me to defer and say someone else is going to have to do the work. But what we have determined, Judge, is that we can identify the statutory requirements for documentation that the Treasurer must receive in order to disperse funds. So that will at least give me a communication point back to the levy districts to tell them, this is how much money you have. Here are the proper procedures to document a valid distribution of those funds, and encourage them in some way in an approved, on a letter that gets approved by our district attorney, and encourage them to get their houses in order. And I think that's a development over the last couple of weeks, Judge, that I haven't had a chance to inform you of. So I think the efforts on the particular levy district that is having an issue with the Texas Attorney General, unfortunately, I think our decision is like really consider just going to have to sort it out using their resources rather than using resources of the county. And that discourages me greatly, Judge.
That's unfortunate.
The levy districts?
Oh, that's it.
The levy districts. You know, the levy districts are really private monies. It's neighbors that get together and say, we need a levy. And those neighbors put up the money for, to maintain those levy districts. They get funding sources, I'm sure, from the government to construct levies and do their thing initially. And then, my understanding, which is developing and growing, that those levy districts then have a board, which again is typically the affected property owners, that are putting up their money, which resides at the county treasury. And we have an active levy district that appears to be properly managed and appears to be on top of their game, and they are working with a core of engineers on a levy repair program. So we are developing for them, here's how you document to us adequately so that we can disperse funds to you, to give you your own money back. And it, perhaps in another year, Judge, I may declare myself a semi-country boy expert on levy districts, but right now, I'm telling you, brother, it's a deep, deep subject to examine. So, but thank you for the question.
It is a significant amount of money that, you know...
We have, yes.
And I guess the core engineers have cut way back on their levy programs, too. They've cut about eighty percent of the levy programs. So I don't know, I don't know who's going to manage the program, even with the core engineers coming back and out. Don't know if they're going to get back into it, or what's...
Well, now that the drought is over, one would expect that the corps' budget priorities will have to change.
That's later, it's got them.
But, you know, we've got, we've got some work. The work is ongoing. It is slower and more tedious than I had expected, and we're just going to develop more. I think to wrap up my comments, there's more of these levy districts down south, so as I've gotten to this stage of understanding, it's to say, okay, I need to get out of isolation. I need to reach out to some of my Treasurers that have this as an ongoing recurring activity. So perhaps we'll revisit this next, next report, Judge, and I'll have your information. Fair?
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions of Mr. Oldfield? Yeah. Okay. The first page is the, is the monthly report, September 30th, 2015, September 30th, 2015. And the second task page would actually be item number eight on our agenda, and that's the quarter report. And so what I'd like to ask you to do now, if you are agreement, is to accept the Treasurer's report for the month of September 2015 through September 30th, 2015. Make the motion. Okay, Commissioner...
Mr. Allen.
Mr. Allen makes the motion, and Commissioner Rosalik seconds the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The next item is to accept the Treasurer's quarterly report, and that's on the second page, and it's from July 1st, 2015 to September 30th, 2015. So we've had that presented as well. Do we have any questions? All right, Commissioner Rosalik makes that motion, and Commissioner Shane seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item is item number nine, and we're to discuss and consider approving the court rules and procedures utilizing the recommended Texas Association of Counties form. I believe we have copies of the pack forms that was sent to us. I believe you have copies of the pack forms that was sent to us. These are the rules of procedure that we have, or that are proposed. Hours of December to this, but there are, there are some changes, I think. Actually, the ones that we got from the county judges association is actually a little, little more lenient than what ours are, but Rebecca, you have any comments that you'd like to make? I know you've worked on this.
Yeah, I have a few. John sent me an email, and he kind of lists out five things that he wanted me to read for the court's consideration. John's been kind of on top of this issue for a while now, just because he's wanted to implement some rules of court, so I think we'll run smoothly. And then talking to other counties, I know Ellis County just implemented these, I think, back in 2012, so they've been around for a long time. And every time you Google Open Meetings Act, it pulls up, have the cover sheet here, it's a whole packet from Texas Association of Counties, and it lists these in the appendix, as the standard forms that they invite courts to adopt or recommend to mitigate for insurance purposes, because you know they represent our county for insurance purposes. So John asked me to read the form, and he makes five points. One, this is an important matter, but not an urgent one. I've asked the court to discuss this today, and then send questions or comments to me during the next week. There may be many questions that come up after this discussion, so we don't need to create any unnecessary sense of urgency. The second point, this is a draft of Texas Association of Counties provisions drafted by the folks in Austin for review and possible implementation around the state. This is significant for a couple reasons. One, none of the provisions were made with an eye towards anything that's happened recently or in the past in Kaufman County. Texas Association of Counties is set up to advocate for the effective and legal administration of counties. Texas Association of Counties' mission is to ensure that government runs effectively and that exposure to unnecessary risks are minimized, because they serve that rule, or substantial rule as an insurance company for many counties. The third point he makes, the court can change any or all of the numbers in the policy, it can decide to increase or decrease numbers, can even decide to omit complete sections. That is, the form is a certain point, should be used however the court thinks is appropriate after due consideration. His fourth, fourth point is a financial one, and he says it makes him stab a set of rules that have, that will help expedite the meetings at any given meeting, there are approximately twenty, twenty more county employees present, several more elected officials. The county has to pay them to their time every day, but savings of thirty minutes per meeting is easily a savings of several hundred dollars. He does a brief calculation, it says twenty employees, elected officials, thirty-five an hour. You're just looking at savings of about eighty-four hundred dollars per year if you credit that thirty minutes. Finally, it's our belief that folks that believe in good government should never stop asking the question, how can we do this better? How can we do it more efficiently? As in addition to your packet, I have the, another standard form, just to give you guys a second option on the public comment. The other form is an adaptation from Fort Ben County. It has substantially the same information, it's just I found this, I liked it better because of the block format, it's easier to read, but this is the Texas attack form. You guys can look at that one too, but I like the other one's format better.
The Fort Ben?
Yeah. And they, the, that one I understand the judge is not, but this one is, yeah, that's the.
This is the Fort Ben, okay.
And they have that on their website, so I've recommended making it really accessible, put the rules up on the website, and then put the form as well, so people can print and have it prepared. Do you guys have any questions, honey?
Well, one thing, of course, it does require people that wish to address the court, there's a form they'll have to fill out now rather than just signing in. The Fort Ben County form does look a little easier to understand, but I want the public to understand that if we do decide to do this today or wait as John suggested later time, that we are going to be requesting quite a bit more information from what we currently ask, and all we have now is just a sign sheet. So people need to realize that, the public will need to sign that, realize that too. But I'm not saying that's bad, I'm just saying it's going to be a change for a lot, you know, for a lot of folks too. And I'm, you know, anything that helps to move, or along with the efficiency of the court, I certainly am in favor of, I do think in a democracy, we should allow our people to speak, but there is a time when we have to go along and conduct business of the court for it also. Anybody have any comments? I think Rebecca suggested that, that John, we could give him our feedback, can that come from us individually, or have that be?
If you can individually.
Okay.
If you have specific legal questions, or maybe efficiency questions about the way the forms formatted.
Okay. Until then, we would just continue to follow the same format that we followed up to this point in time.
Yeah, you want to post it again, and then have a consensus between all of you guys on what you want it to be.
Right. Does anybody see a problem with this format?
I like this form here, but we need to table this and discuss this stuff back.
But I think this one.
Do you have any discussion about it?
I don't have any.
Do you have any, Saturday?
I've been here hoping I can accomplish.
Are the rest of y'all comfortable with it?
Yeah, I agree too. I like everything I see here, but it's.
Well, I think that the form that we've got up here would be a good last thing. I think that most people don't understand is, if you want something on the agenda, you go to the commission and get it on, it's, it's a pretty simple process, so. And it might cut out a little confusion on what's going on sometimes too, because sometimes you get up and talk about something that, you know, we don't know about it. And it needs to be about county business, when you come to court and talk. It doesn't need to be about individual attacks or anything else, so. I brought it up, me and Jackie talked about it when we went to school, a beauty about it even, so. The way the agenda's presented, so, I guess, it's a good thing, you know, if we're getting straightened out, we can all come together and figure out a good process, make sure everybody's heard, because we want everybody heard, but it isn't a democracy. Sharon, I want to sound with anybody.
The, the big difference will be, I say the big difference, one big difference is will be the form that we're asking people to complete before they have to sign in, and so that, that's one big difference is, Commissioner, I think you presented this form.
Yes, that's the tag.
Yeah. I think you amended it, or you changed so that.
Yeah. That's, you know, somebody look at, that's accepted, you know, DA's office can.
We can reach out and get the form and clean it up. I just submitted it to him with the link so that you guys could see any amendments or changes from that standardized form.
So the question is, is do you want to table this for the time being, get back with John and Rebecca, and make suggestions? We could even have a workshop, if you wanted to, about this, to make sure we get it right. Or if you don't want to table this today, we can go ahead and vote on it, but there's some things that we're going to need to determine, one being which form we want the public to complete. And then the other here, Commissioner Resalick has suggested that we, right now, we limit it to three minutes. I think the tax form had five minutes.
Wait, I don't hear. I'll change it to three minutes.
Which is current.
So that they would be parallel.
Right. And then we would have no more than, more than ten speakers each side, so.
Ten minutes for it.
Then that to five.
Yeah, well, you know, that's one of the things that everybody discusses when you go to all the schools and hours and that thing. It is, because if somebody really gets mad, they have to bring in fifty people, and they all have ten minutes to speak, and, you know, you're headed until midnight, and you know you're getting the business done, so, you know, a lot of counties that I've noticed that they instantly cut down the number of speakers that can speak on the item, that way it, it moves the process along. And, and a lot of them, they don't allow you to come back and talk on the same subject again, the same person, on the last thing that I mentioned, I put it down again. And that's something to look at, so.
So what's your, what's your take?
I make a motion to adopt the rules of order, Commissioner Court moving order, as suggested by the Texas Association of Counties, and the sign-in sheet that I accompanied that with, that was the Fort Ben example.
And then the one that you just, I talked about, the one in your packet.
And, and that motion, let me make sure I understand that there's, of course, obviously we've got to put in Kaufman County everywhere, but on the first page, you're changing item eight from five minutes to three minutes. Is that part of it?
So it'd be parallel with the, with the sign-in sheet?
Yeah. And then on item, I mean, on page twenty-five, I guess, this came from the book, that we would limit that to more than thirty minutes for any single item. And then if more than ten members of the public wish to address the public agenda item, then only the first ten members of the public decided equally between those members of the public wishing to speak for an agenda item. In other words, there'd be thirty minutes total, fifteen on each side.
Right.
People for it again. And then the other issue, I believe, is pretty well down except to the, the form that we've asked the public to complete before, and this is one Rebecca spoke to about Fort Ben, using this as the public participation form. And we'll point out that this, so everybody knows that the instructions they fill out, all blanks, please print, so where we've been pretty lenient on that in fact, it would require everybody to, to fill out this form and complete everything, but if you don't do that, you would not be allowed to participate in the public forums, that way you are.
Using Fort Ben as candidate for, candidate for.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, that's, that's their form. So Rebecca, ask a question. If they don't fill out everything on this form, we're going to tell them they can't speak? We're going to be all right with that?
I, I think it doesn't work immediately, right before the meeting, I think they, the idea that you submit these forms over the course of the weekend to county clerk, and then they collect them, and then organize them, and make sure that we're meeting each the time requirement. So if during that process, something isn't filled out correctly, she should be able to send it back and say, hey, this isn't accepted for this reason, and then give the person an opportunity to fill it out and submitting it correctly.
So it would go to the county clerk for?
That's who would process all those requests. That's how it's worded in the participation form note at the bottom.
So we would not have this spontaneous, if somebody came to the court and wished to speak, if they'd not gone through this process, that they would not be allowed to speak?
That's correct.
Takes some time for the public to get to know the, the process. Yeah, we'll have to publicize that. And we can put some things in their chairs, you know, when the people come in, we can come up with some sort of Kaufman County rules, meetings, or something like that, if somebody has one. But it would be a significant change where we're operating, and, I mean, I'm prepared to go either way, I just, whatever, it is going to be a significant change, and. You agree with that or you disagree with it? Just need to realize that.
Sure.
So we have a, yes, ma'am.
What happens with some of the people if they don't have internet or computers that they can do this? They're not going to have any more taxpayers, so they're not going to be able to record them.
If it's an agenda item, this form can be on the same table that the sign-in sheet has been on, and they can sign it, fill it out, and speak on any agenda item.
You say you still don't have like a, a writing that they have to fill out the form? Okay.
Sign it, fill it out, and then it can be counted. She's a rec, she's the official record keeper of the commission report.
So they could do that, that morning and like this morning?
Yeah. And, and if there's something wrong, the clerk will say, this isn't filled out, we fix it, sell them before court.
I mean, it's a one page.
Yeah, I know, they're saying they'll have an opportunity to deal with, hand it to the clerks, so the clerk will be required to be there, but somebody will put it on prior to the court.
All right. Work is there, that would be.
Yeah. I'm just saying, get somebody there, people will be able to fill it out.
All right, we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Resalick, but I have a second.
I'll say it.
Have a second from Commissioner Cheney. Do we have other discussion? If not, all, in favor, say aye. If all opposed?
No. I just, the only reason I'd like that more time to give is to get questions, John.
That's an I vote no to, that very.
Other than that, the form, I like the form, I like that.
Well, then you rule, we're going to affect Rebecca, what we've used to bring it down, and we hope to have this in place by our next meeting, two weeks from now. All right, thanks very much on that. And we'll get a form when the change is made, there is a place, and this will be in order of the court. We'll need to all sign this, so we'll ask the DA's office to help us with that as well. All righty, item number nine, I'm sorry, item number ten is to discuss and consider moving payroll responsibilities from the auditors' office to the county treasurer's office, and Commissioner Resalick asked that this be placed on the agenda.
Yes, per the county treasurer's request, I placed this on the agenda so that we could get the payroll in the treasurer's office and get it to the lady that's been doing it since she has moved from county auditor's office to the treasurer's office. So we will, thank you, Mr. Hamidov.
As we discussed on prior occasions, the retirement of Carol Aga, who's been a tremendous resource to the county, allowed us to post that, to finalize a revised job description for that chief deputy clerk, and that chief deputy clerk in the treasurer's office is known as the assistant treasurer. And with that updated job description and a proper job posting by the human resource department, we interviewed four outside candidates, and we interviewed four candidates that were already county employees. The outstanding candidate was a current county employee in the auditors' department that, whose primary responsibility was the preparation of the bi-weekly payroll. As I've learned county history, payroll had been, I think in July of thirteen, payroll had been moved by court order from the treasury office, rather than department as it is in the agenda item, it is the treasury office. And, and when that payroll move occurred, the employee that had been preparing the payroll movement, so that same employee is now coming back to treasury, and I believe that it would be in the best interest of the county for continuity of knowledge to allow those payroll responsibilities to follow that employee, restoring the historical organizational structure of the county. This also allows the audit function to continue to do as we've done, the audit function, the county auditor will continue to review the payroll that is prepared, and continue to countersign the checks. So it is just a flipping of duties. In the line item transfer that the court will see, the employee that is moving had longevity pay and merit pay, along with the burden on those two items, and there's a line item transfer that the county auditor prepared, looked at, that moves those dollars. And in discussions on Friday, to equalize payroll dollars with responsibilities, the treasury will need a clerk that has a higher skill level than the. the Treasury will need a clerk that has a higher skill level than the typical entry-level deputy clerk. So to enhance that entry-level deputy clerk that we had budgeted, the auditor has prepared a line item transfer to move six thousand dollars plus the payroll burden on that from the health insurance expense line item in the budget to Treasury payroll line item. And we'll have a gap in Treasury. We'll be a two-person department for about forty-five days so that we can claw back some health insurance cost, claw back some labor cost. So that, you know, my plan is that with this six thousand being moved, the Treasury will be able to upgrade its staff technical abilities so that we can have segregation of duties between my new deputy clerk, which has a job description labeled Treasury clerk, and my chief deputy clerk, who's the Assistant Treasurer. So, you know, I believe this will position the county to have another long run in this organizational structure. Because I've requested the commissioner to approve this transfer, knowing that there is a line item transfer that comes with it.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Rulick that we move the duties of the payroll from the Auditor's Office to the County Treasurer's Department. Do I have a second?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. Let me see if we've got a second. Go ahead and ask a question.
You have, you said two-person. You know how much you said, you got two people there.
For about forty-five days, it will be myself and my chief deputy.
That's it?
And we, we both agree that we can, we'll just both do what it takes to get the job done so that we can not have any additional impact on the budget of the county.
Which is a reduction from three.
Which is a reduction from an elected official and two full clerks. And again, we will go and we will hire that second clerk. And I believe I responded to someone that had a question that, you know, at the end of the year, if I'm over on my budget, if we my line item gets reduced, I will not come to the court and ask for more money.
It looks like all the money's in order.
The money should be in order. But right now, Commissioner, the typical history on these transitions when you've got retirement and that person has tremendous historical knowledge, the typical procedure I've learned is that people will come and ask for a line item transfer to fund their training budget. Because we are, we do, right now, we're running about sixteen hundred dollars a month above our annualized run rate on human resource costs because of that training time. And we believe Carol Aga is targeting the first, after the first full week of November, to phase down from any full-time involvement being available to build us time on an hourly basis as we need it. And we'll engage in this forty-five day period where we manage the functions with just the two of us. And that as we enter the holiday period and get ready for 2016, we'll bring on our replacement staff.
Okay, other questions? We have a motion from Commissioner Rulick. Can I have a second from Commissioner Shane? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a question.
Want to leave the payroll where it is for the forty-five days and get your people in place?
Commissioner, for the patriots that have occurred since this employee transition, that employee has gone back up to audit to do the payroll. And we would be certainly willing to do that. It's a great idea if the county auditor is willing in her budget to pay the three days that that person goes up there to do the payroll. That would be a great process.
Just a question. I'm sitting in chair here, so I don't...
That's why we're having it open to court, so we all have our open discussion.
Yes, sir.
Does that make sense or not? It takes a day and a half and so, right?
Yeah, we've cut that process down quite a bit. Historically, the, before I came here now, payroll was in the county auditor's office. And at one time, it was talked about. I wasn't here, I just researched some history, that there was a move to eliminate the county treasurer's position, which is a long process, and to give that treasurer additional duties to keep that office from being abolished. The county auditor at that time moved payroll to the county treasurer to obtain that duty. It was the court that asked me to do that, and I took on that responsibility. And that employee to get it structured and get the payroll onto the new system. With the timekeeping and the new system software, payroll is not a four-day job. It's one and a half to two days. As long as we can get everybody in the departments to correspond and get their time sheets fixed, it doesn't take long to do it.
And that's true. And then all of the add-on time of getting checks into the bundles if they need to be, you know, again, not to contradict the auditor, but this, these last two times, it's been most of a three-day transition. And again, it's the same employee. We're just coding the payroll.
Are there any issues with the way the payroll is currently being handled?
I believe the employee that does the payroll does a good job, Judge. I think that we're seeing the continuity in that position. And, you know, that again, that employee is, as you well know, is a long-term county employee that has significant historical knowledge and skill regarding the people and the pay rates and the structures of the county. That would not easily be transitioned.
I guess I have a question for Karen. Did you wish to give up the payroll responsibilities out of your office?
No, sir, but that is a court decision. I will tell you that this, y'all not making up your mind discussing how you want to do it, has caused some dysfunction between my department and the county treasurer's department. And the employee that is doing payroll possibly did not even want to do payroll because of the ongoing delay of not knowing where to office at, where to get email, where to get phone calls, fix the time sheet. So that's why I leave my office unlocked, so she can get on the phone and get the answers or get on that computer because it's a secure computer and, you know, the transfers to find the payroll files.
The second question I have during the, that's going to be a day and a half to do payroll, which is much easier than you see in the new software and things that are being added in place. What does this employee do the other day and a half days?
It goes back in August. The time sheet simply, remember the S O in the jail are on a different format and we have to verify those hours, fix those hours if we find something. Not manually going in there to do it. We have to contact that department head or that elected official. Our supervisors say these need to be fixed or they're going to lose time or they're not going to prove the correct time. And then she has helped with the field audits and ten ninety-nine information and setting up new vendors and looking at statements that we get from vendors to make sure we haven't duplicated a payment or statement. So there's been additional duties assigned.
And then my last question is, you would need to refill this position then if the court approves moving payroll back to the Treasurer's Office?
Ah, yes, sir.
Other questions? Have a motion on the floor? Any other discussion?
I don't, I don't know. So if it's in the payroll, are you saying that she won't have access to the computers or the right information to be able to do payroll?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And so then?
We just decided not to move it down until y'all approved it because you did it by court order. I couldn't just say, here, Ronnie, it's yours because I don't have that authority.
It sounded like there's anything to do with it. But you still audit the work that, so we're going to have a separate department. Does payroll with an auditor? Well, auditor to payroll that.
We have that same function already, but that's okay.
But you're auditing yourself.
Well, I don't go in there and do any maintenance and I don't do the payroll, so I'm a separate person, side of it that looks at it.
Any other questions from you?
Oh, I'm going to work. I love it.
Okay, and it is?
Take all the additional responsibility, that's right.
Okay, so make sure I'm clear on this. If the move is made, you're implying that you would not have to fill the position, the second position you had in your office?
We will, yes.
You will?
But that, you know, that position then will have a more robust job description with higher technical abilities needed to perform higher technical tasks than we continually have with an entry-level clerk.
Okay, so you're, the level, you've got three employ, well, you've got two employees plus yourself. That would remain the same?
Yes, sir. And the gap, Judge, that we're going to create is just a time gap to manage budget costs of your?
You already had two employees, right?
Correct.
And you took off two?
Yes.
So now you just come back to two employees?
Yeah, that hasn't changed.
So you'll have the same number? You don't have to, that's why I have something?
You, we got, right, you got my line item transfer to move the remaining merit and longevity that belonged to Debbie so it follows her, which is standard procedure, and the social security and the retirement. I have created an addendum because of the late time talking. I did not email it out to you. The current employee that's no longer there was sitting at the base that, I guess, is entry level, the twenty-eight. This is plus the twelve hundred, which is twenty-nine something. So this is the additional money that he has requested that would cover moving this position up to the thirty-six something that he has asked for. Yes, it is, because we had some more discussion.
And this is so that the audit staff person cannot take a reduction in money allocated to that position. And again, that position that's in the county auditor function is paid about seventy-one hundred dollars more than a typical deputy clerk, recognizing the skill associated with payroll preparation. So we're going to allow, the auditor and I agree that that position of the auditor will stay and she will be, have a robust compensation package to offer a technically capable person who can have skills that are tailored to the auditor's needs. You know, not tailored to a blended position of primary payroll clerk and doing other things, but the auditor will be allowed to define a job description with robust technical skill requirements to assist her with her functions as she more needs it. You know, the easy thing would be to not go through this process, make my life easy at the Treasury function, but I think it is in the best interest of the county to maintain the continuity and the historical knowledge that our payroll clerk has.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion from the members of the court? We have on the table, I mean, on the, this been a motion, we have a second. I'll call for a question. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? So the motion carries and?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
We're new divisions. If we all will get together and make this work as smoothly as we have worked with Judge and the first one.
May I hear who said no?
I said no, and I'm not sure.
I said no.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
I've got an order prepared for you guys, but I also need you to make a finding on that line item transfer. That's the same motion. Could you transfer authority to go to the court?
Are we going to do that during the?
During the?
I've given it to you to review and then I can bring it to you when I do line item transfers. And you can ratify the amount of money that was.
With that?
That's sufficient.
Okay, and so here's the order and that will move this from the?
And actually, it has the line item language in there just because I wanted it covered. And then it makes a finding in the county purpose that that year.
So should we vote on the line item transfer?
I prefer. That way I don't have to redraft the order, but I can do it.
We've got to make a motion to make the line item transfers. Okay, so that would be a part of that. That would just be a second part of this entire process. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Shane, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Now let's move on to item number eleven. That has to do with Proposition Seven in the program of early election. By the way, I think this is the last week of our voting, I believe. And so if you have a vote, you should. This was sent to us by the Texas Association of Counties and also by the Regional Transportation Commission as well. And it is a resolution saying we're in support of Proposition Seven, using state funds that are already in place to showing our support for that. So I'd like to hear your comments on that and if you'd like to support moving these funds so they can be used to highways across the state of Texas.
I make a motion to the governor.
I have a motion from Commissioner Rulick to approve this resolution in support of Proposition Seven. Do I accept that? Commissioner Allen sent his motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, this proposition is going to help the county greatly with all the road bond issues that we have going on right now. This will be money that's coming to our county to help push things forward. Just want the public to know that and be aware of it.
Right, especially with our county road bond monies that we're beginning to put to use just about every month now in different projects across the county. The fact that we have money to partner with the state should help us be maybe at the front of the line, which that's what we, that's what we want to be with these monies that are coming in.
This is kind of what Mr. Holster said to us last week. Put us in a very good position because we've done a lot of driveway and environmental stuff. So if this money comes available, they'll be looking for projects to start.
Be ready.
We have our homework done because of the road bond package. This will put us in an excellent position.
And by then, we will have a, hopefully a countywide thoroughfare plan in place too that we hope could help move that forward.
I think it's pretty exceptional that the different funds that the state has, that there's been so many counties that didn't apply for it and then it was put back in the pot so we could, we could apply for it and get something else. So that's good for good.
Mr. Ophelia?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Judge. And I just want to chime in and reiterate, this is one of the primary reasons that Mr. Holster suggested we keep all of our road bond fund fully liquid and fully available.
He expects money to become available?
He expects money to become available that are for projects that we currently don't have funding for. And we'll be able to leverage it from our dollars. So, you know, I always like to get the interest income and push hard. But Mr. Holster makes, you know, convincing arguments.
Talking about invested funds, I had an internet or an email I got from a fellow, I think it was me, me and Eve, said he had a great investment opportunity. And I'll forward that on to you so you know, it sounded good.
I thought about that same one.
Judge, I only consider...
Judge, I only consider things that come from, like, Nigeria.
I could, okay, well, I think this one was, and they've been routed for, for other countries, but, well, I think the return on it really does, uh, really does good, so.
You have invested a lot.
You know, I'm on- I'm essentially, I'm thinking money, well, I'm trying to break a little bit, but, uh, item number twelve. Think you should discuss and consider releasing road bond back to Dawson, Geo Physical, Calhoun County, Creighton, Florida.
They did, uh, a couple of sizable hits down on the county line road and they didn't drive into big rigs on it at all. They just drove a truck up and down. They were there, I think, two days. Took pictures before and after and looked at it before and after physically, no damage.
So you're recommending that?
I recommend releasing the bond, yes. They're done.
They're done.
They're done. Copy back.
They're done.
And we have a motion from Commissioner Allen and a second by Commissioner Shane. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Judge, I did not hear that.
Pardon?
I did not get the first and second, the release, the road bond, Debbie Allen.
Allen made it, Shane seconded.
Thank you.
All righty, item number thirteen is from Laurie Floyd. Uh, it's our director to discuss and consider accepting the twenty-sixteen United Healthcare renewal package for our retired insurance. This is not our employees, but people that we have on retired insurance.
Yeah, this is a supplement benefit that the TAC offers, doesn't cross the county anything, we just participate in the program. Uh, when employees retire and once they hit age sixty-five, they're not eligible for the county self-insurance, they're only eligible for Medicare. And so this is a supplement that TAC offers, um, so it's done through TAC, but it's a different benefit and so they don't have to go find the supplement if they want to. Uh, when employees retire, we tell them about it. You don't have to worry any employees that are on the program. Um, the costs are pretty comparable to other plans that they can fund, but that limit is there if they want it. So we just participate in it.
Did you have questions? Was it, uh, Ms. Floyd?
Is this, um, only company that's meeting this time?
Yeah, because it's the TAC. Yeah, no, TAC, um, it's the same, TAC is our insurance and they provide it, so it's the only company that they use. So, like, TAC goes out for this and they do their thing and that's what they offer for this Silver Points program.
So it's, it's being through TAC?
Yes. Just like our other, LuPra or something like that.
But the county is not out for it?
No, we have no cost to it at all, we're just, we're just fishing.
Do you remember that, uh, that employees, ex-employees that are on this board?
I, um, I know there was one since I've been here, that's the only one.
Yeah, so it's not even-
Usually, yeah, most of the employees already have their active line or, uh, but I get asked questions about it a lot. So people inquire about it and they still follow it.
At least they have an option. Right. And if it's the entire of the insurance being like the, it's not up there yet.
For twenty on it next year.
Yeah, so what's your wager on item thirteen? A motion from Commissioner Shane and a second from Commissioner Phillips. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number fourteen is also from Ms. Floyd to discuss and consider appointing Sif Lee Pool panel member. I believe we do this every year about this.
Well, I, I do it, um, when our panel members, um, we have a meeting every year, we go and, we get two years' goes, first time we do it. Um, but we have permission on the board that, um, retired or left, I guess. So, um, I just need to update the members. So the only member actually changing is Commissioner Allen is volunteer graciously to be a member of the panel and then all the other members stay the same and they have all, have all that approval, I think so.
Do we have, uh, any questions about this? Thank you, Commissioner, for volunteering.
We did, we volunteered.
I did ask him, I did ask him.
She did ask him, very nicely, very nicely.
All right, we have a motion to, uh, appoint Commissioner Allen to the Sif Lee Pool. Uh, by Commissioner Allen made that motion, Commissioner Shane seconds motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number fifteen is to discuss and consider approving the budget transfer for our Justice of the District precinct, four additional costs for car allowance determined by the recent meeting of the Salary Grievance Committee. Does that, I believe, you have information on-
I think Karen's passing it out right now.
Okay.
I figured the amount.
Oh, you did?
For the budget. Here, we just see this last page, it's on there too. It's the, it's the date, so make sure the one who signed that's got it.
This is, I think I've given you a copy of this, this was the people that were on the, uh, Grievance Committee.
Oh, you're welcome.
And I believe it increased, uh, Mr. Erdudja, Adam's car allowance from twenty-eight hundred dollars to, uh, by twenty-eight hundred dollars, uh, from, uh, for total now ten thousand dollars. This was the, uh, decision of the Salary Grievance Committee. Uh, do I have a motion to accept, uh, that as well as approving the budget transfer for this particular item?
Motion.
I have a motion from Commissioner Allen. Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Uh, Commissioner Phillips seconds motion for the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. All right, the item number sixteen, I'm sorry, you got sixteen, it's from Ms. McLeod to present an update, uh, on the American Traffic Solutions financial information through September twentieth, or September twentieth.
Well, we are kinda still going back and forth on September with them, so I wanted to kinda leave September along for a little bit, six. Uh, they changed, some of their members in the accounting side of it and K W, when he was doing audit, found out they owed us a little bit of different amount of money. But the total revenues through, um, August is a hundred and thirty-two thousand five seventy-five. Their forty percent fee through August was sixty-nine thousand three twenty-eight. We did twenty-eight hundred and eighty dollars worth of refunds. Uh, your excess revenues over those expenditures is sixty thousand three sixty-seven. So with that, September will be a little bit more and we can give you more of an update on, um, what caused that issue. Trying to get our accounting side to agree with their accounting side and we are just having all kinds of fun arguing back and forth with till they get more satisfied with it. Have any questions?
Yeah, the, uh, I only had back in June, July and August.
That's, that's the, yeah, we didn't do September.
I see my head's September, it's prior, prior to June.
I read you all those last time, I mean, the fourth, Commissioner. You want me to pull mine and make your copy and email them to you?
No, I'm taking it.
Okay.
What I was, what I was asking is that, that hundred, what was it, oh, we have it?
A hundred and thirty-two thousand. That's it.
All right, so in, in June, it shows that our net income is nineteen thousand eight dollar.
Yes, yes.
But that's not taken into consideration the, uh, the fees of the seventy-five hundred dollars per month, per camera.
No, sir.
That, if, if we're heading through that phase, it's a common thread. So in June, we actually have a deficit of eighteen thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. In July, we have a deficit, eighteen thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. And in August, we have a deficit, um, of thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. In September, we won't go through that since you said it, I'm correct.
Right, can we get that correction? There is about, I know, uh, about thirty-two hundred dollars that were questioned and, um-
Yeah, I saw it.
Saw that, yeah.
Any other questions of the auditor about the ATS Financial Administration or information? Not, we'll move to item number seventeen and that will require us to go into the closed meeting. So I'll have a motion to exit the regular meeting and enter into the executive session. Mr. Allen makes that motion, the second, Commissioner Phillips seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we will take a five-minute break, let the room have time to clear and then we'll come back in and, uh, discuss, uh, the item that, uh, you showed, showed listed there. And that would be, uh, all in, by the way, let's go ahead and go, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number eighteen that we will discuss in the executive session will be pursuant to Code five five one oh seven one. We discuss pending or contemplating litigation concerning the prepayments made to the Department of Treasury and Internal Revenue Service approved by the Commissions Board on October twelfth, twenty fifteen and paid on October fifteenth, uh, twenty fifteen. This was asked and placed on the general executive session, uh, intended by Commissioner Vazali and Mr. Ophill. So we will take about a five-minute break and then we'll come back and, uh, see if we're through. We'll open the meeting back in a minute. And Phillips, and at twelve oh one, we voted to come out of the executive session. Uh, as far as item, to get all that, uh, law-
Yes, sir, thank you.
Uh, we now have item number twenty. Gentlemen, what is your pleasure on item number twenty? Uh, do we need to take any action?
We're ready to action.
Uh, we, we will not take any action. Let's go ahead and put that in form of motion that we take no action. That's been up from Commissioner Vazali and second by Commissioner Shane. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And number twenty-one is to discuss line item transfer. I know we've had a lot of votes, that's, now that we're here.
Yes, sir. And those that you got in the mail, big packet, we're cleaning up stuff from last year's budget because I had two books, eight days of payroll that belonged in two thousand fifteen. Um, so were there any questions? I know Commissioner Phillips called me about one that he had and I explained that to him and wanted to give y'all a chance to ask if you had any concerns or need to know what happened or what caused it.
I did. Well, he told me, I was clear.
Mike, what's your, you prefer the line item transfer?
A motion from Commissioner Vazali to approve the line item transfers. Commissioner Phillips seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number twenty-two is to discuss and consider claims for payment.
Uh, your claims for payment are a million four hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and, uh, I believe K W emailed you your chart with your numbers and the breakdown. And anybody have any specific questions on any of the bills?
Uh, I did have something more.
We got a new vendor called Cap Fleet up there, who is that?
Uh, that was to do with the, uh, patrol vehicles that they had purchased, uh, and some upgrades that, um, Jack had issued P O for, um, the S O to, uh, purchase these things that they needed. Would you like to see the invoices?
That's for a new vehicle being ripped out or for-
Yes, well, some of them were for just updating. Uh, Jack, if you wanna input any-
I have to feel, I was talking about the motion.
Pardon me?
I have to feel, I don't, I don't know.
Maybe that's the, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Both of them are two feet, Jack.
Yeah.
Yeah, and running two, same two feet, that's what.
Well, there's a bunch of them here.
Uh, Cap Fleet.
Well, they, they have to do with COG, then.
Transport seats and different things. Yes, sir.
COG for wiretap funds?
Yeah, the two hundred and seventy-five thousand, that's the, uh, air check grant. We got the money in and then we send it to Net COG and they do the, uh-
Oh, on the, on the bill?
Air check, yeah, that presentation, if you remember, we brought it to court and, and we had let you know that we're gonna get the two hundred and seventy-five thousand. We, it's just really a pass through to them because then they, um, help the people in Coffee County that has to get their vehicles. You remember that now, Commissioner?
Yeah, they have to do something with, clean out a fleet by-
Yeah.
I don't know where they went, you know, August, they decided, you know, I might show you, I'm afraid.
I gave it all that much.
I don't know where they went, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't, money probably-
They're talking.
Well, I'm sorry, number we got, because if they was like haffling, possibly it would come off.
Yes, sir.
I guess it's in the courtroom, had, had play.
Uh, yes, sir, that's off of the city government that, um, usually, um, Jack, unless they use it, you see it?
And I, if that's what it is, I'm gonna-
Yeah, that's what it is, so.
We kind of reviewed some of the last week.
Okay, I'm, I'm-
We have new treasures.
So I remember the conversation, is that different place from Philly? And also this-
There's a flag over in the box.
That has their name put up.
Okay. Should have placed us to the box.
Yeah, they placed us to the box.
I think they threw out a question over there. That was the new, that Cap Co, that new company that we're getting.
Cap Fleet?
Cap Fleet, that's what I had.
You know, after, after the question, you know, you guys asked me, you guys put money in the budget for vehicles, so. You know, I don't know what they're buying, you know, all of it's in the parameters of that, but it looks like they're printing some of it.
You cut this change?
Yes.
I haven't seen those.
Hold on a minute. I knew you were gonna ask that. What page was that on, Commissioner?
Uh, twenty-three, call, right. Okay, cause they blow water, let them wash it here.
Y'all, y'all pretty, yes, you're familiar with this.
I got you.
They wind up being- Yes, uh, this one right there, there's a condenser in the back where it's like- Isn't that all you had?
That works.
These two, are you, are you wish, needs attorneys? This one was the first place and the fee was reduced by one. One thousand three thousand, it's like they-
Pretty quick turnaround to the court, it was two, two months, other judges are-
They're, they're, we, we got a check from Net COG, um, unsold for the, the nine-one-one mission critical of a hundred and eighteen thousand and they give us additional twenty-five thousand for, can't remember. And they give us additional twenty-five thousand for, can't remember. Recorder, so we have, get that check coded for Ronnie's office to put back in Fund Eleven because that was the mission critical construction account. And make sure we get it coded correctly, and then whatever y'all need that money for to help finish that area, it's, it's sitting in there.
Did we get that backroom painted? The computer room, the computer room, Jack?
We didn't have a seal.
Shouldn't that be sealed off for dust?
The reason why we have lever units where it's all the vision, cooling in, and when the architect drew it up, and we were going through the process. Funds, yeah, decision was made by architect, and all of those, I mean, uh-
What room we talked about?
Kind of the equipment room of that.
Equipment room, or all the computers, servers, or the, just be painted, or is this bare sheet rock wall?
No, that's actually, uh, not sheet rock, it's, uh, for walls.
Well, that's all the sheet rock. There's not sheet rock wall?
Well, it'd be worse, if it's not sealed, it'd be worse. Doing condensation on the inside.
That's why, that's why we have a lever unit, two levers. It's all the motion. We'll get our mepus.
Alrighty, I have a motion to pay the bills.
Motion.
Motion from Commissioner Allen, do I have a second? Commissioner Shane seconded, all in favor say aye. Over to adjourn the meeting.
Before you adjourn, I just wanted to give you an update, working with these, uh, budget line item transfers. The general fund came in about twenty-three thousand dollars short of what we expected to receive and what we had in the budget, which is excellent. And, uh, the general fund expenditures came out about, came under about seven hundred thousand, so we've done pretty good for last year. So thank y'all for helping me with this one, I appreciate it.
Alright, I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Phillips makes a motion, Commissioner Allen seconds motion, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, we'll see you up here when you some more day, Mark.